City Council meeting today is Tuesday, May the third at six thirty. If I can have a word prayer tonight. Dear Father, thank you for this night, Lord. Thank you for the language you give us. Thank you for all the time that we have to work together, Lord. And thank you for our beautiful town. For this council, Lord, watch over God and rectus and give us the wisdom that we need and to work together, Lord, to to benefit the best for the town. That will be our shining testimony for you and all that we say and do. Watch over us, God, and rectus, and help us have a good night. Jesus, I'm rubbering. Stand up for the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America. Intuitively republi, with its name, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the breathing of justice for all.
Thank you. Do I make sure you got your mics on so I can hear you good? All right, hello. Do I have a motion for approval of amendments for the regular city council meeting for April fifth, two thousand twenty-two?
All motion approved, regular city council meeting on April fifth, two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
Mr. Millian, Mr. Nettles, Ms. Backus, and Mr. Seeger, stand by. Very good, motion's carried. All right, do I have approval of tonight's meeting agenda? Then we're going to have a.
We need to make two amendments to the meeting, Mr. Mayor. The first would be under new business. I would put this at nine D, which says purchase of mowing tractor for sports complex, and I would say and discuss architectural drawings that came in after this agenda was posted and created. And then under executive session, at the end where it says two oh seven Sistrum Street, I would say and discuss an economic development opportunity that was just presented to the city.
Okay. Do you have a motion to approve amended agenda for tonight?
Make a motion that we approve the the meeting agenda with the additions. Is that okay?
I'll second that.
Mr. Millian, Mr. Nettles, Ms. Backus, Mr. Seeger, very good, motion's carried, thank you. Okay, the report of standing committees, Darlington Downtown Revitalization Association, Mr. Bennett.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, I didn't want to interrupt. Minor technical difficulties. If you don't mind, I'll go ahead and find my report as I'm doing this. After a busy April with the taste of Darlington and our annual get on the green fall tournament, we also ended the month with our cleanup day with beautification board Darlington Garden Club. And we had probably thirty, thirty-five volunteers show up this past Saturday, and they collected probably twenty-one bags of litter from the streets. And they also planted flowers and put out pine straw and mulch to kind of beautify the area and beautify the town before folks come in to race. Of course, after all of that, we are preparing for our summer concert series Saturdays on the square in your packet, and there are some flyers for the audience as well that has the complete schedule. Our kickoff event is going to feature Muddy Creek Revival, which is a southern rock and country band. They're going to be performing on Saturday, May fourteenth, from seven to ten P. M. On Public Square. The Darlington cruisers plan to continue their monthly car shows during the concerts, and we have a solid group of food trucks that are scheduled to attend. Thanks to Pepsi, Fiber Industries, Belt Fion Home, Wilson Senior Care, and Celia Darlington as a presenting sponsor. And thank you to the community for supporting our efforts. We've seen the crowd and the numbers attending just grow and grow every, every, every event. The slate band continues with Beach Music Hall of Famers, jazz band, country music artists, and then we will end the year with a New Year's Eve party with Level Ten Band and Show on New Year's Eve, and we'll drop the ball. We are continuing our monthly member breakfast at eight A. M. On Thursday, May twenty-sixth, Kentucky Sire. The meals are at no charge for members of the E R A and a small five dollar fee to go towards the meal for all others. The event typically is on the last Thursday through October. We kind of skip November and December. This is just too many holidays. But it allows our businesses to connect with each other because we need to strengthen our local economy, and one way to do that is for businesses to meet that may not run into each other any other way. In the meantime, we also continue to promote Darlington's businesses on social media and through our news alert system each week. Our alerts reach more than twenty-seven hundred people. And we continually update our webpage, buildupdarlington.org, which is where you can sign up to receive those alerts either on your phone, via text, or directly to your email. Any questions?
To the chamber of Congress.
Hello, there we go. So first and foremost, the main thing is Freedom Fest, which I'm really excited about. It's June twenty-fifth in the square from four to nine. So we will be having six rides, and I can go ahead and tell you those rides right now. We'll be having swings, the Berry Go Round, the tractors for the little kids, and then the bungee trampoline from Rockwall, and then like a slide of Playball. We are raising money for that right now. We are also taking dinner applications as well. And then at the first Saturday of every month, there is a Bluegrass Festival at the Grandal Post Office. We do have complimentary tickets if you are interested. You can call me or text. My number is eight four three three oh seven ninety-six eleven. And then again, I will go quickly go over our, the awards that we give award out at our membership banquet. So Rising Star will stand by the Creek Boutique. Small Business PD Treasures, Big Businesses Fiber Industries, Educator of the Year went to Dr. Jeffrey Tappoff. Our Healthcare Award went to the Free Medical Clinic in Darlington County. Community Pride went to the Darlington Garden Club, as well as the Beautification Board. Forum Member of the Year went to Anna DeWitt. And then Life Home Achievement went to Mr. Roosevelt Scott. Again, thank you all for coming. And then we do still have the Isle of Darlington Mall and Society of T-shirts in your packet. You can see on the list of what they will type. This Friday, Kentucky Sire will have their race party. The vibe music by Preston Delfi ended from six to ten. Carrie Royal worked at Fiber Industries, and she became the process engineer in the year. She just won, she has been awarded the Women's Step Ahead Award. This is a very big award for Carrie and the Fiber Industries. This month is strike awareness month, so Kalamata is having two events this month. First is a lunchmark. That is Thursday, May twelfth, from twelve to one. It will be at Kalamata Pines. The second event is Saturday, May twenty-first, from nine in one to twelve, and it's just kind of like a fair with stroke awareness, types of activities like seminars, CPR training. There's also the young kids center as well. And there will be door prizes valued at the six hundred dollars. There's two flyers at the back. First at this church, their Vacation Bible School, will be the week of June twelve through through June sixteenth, and it'll be from six to eight. Kids ages of three to fifth grade. That is all that I have. Any questions?
Yes, so the rides for Freedom Fest, how much are they for the children? I mean, we do rides, right?
Right.
Okay, so I should make sure that we're doing the rides. Okay, that's fine.
All right, so what's today, June twenty-fifth, you said?
Yes.
Fourth of October, October nine?
Fourth of nine.
Fourth of nine.
Thank you.
Thank you. Citizens wishing to speak. We have Denise, Amber.
Denise.
Stand up.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, citizens. I am here tonight because I wanted to thank you all, especially VR. They they must have told us boys, the restaurant is good sign, and I thank you. I'm still having some carpentry work that's lacking on the front of that building right now, so that's been a whole up for me as far as, you know, the carpentry, completing the job. Other than that, I'm waiting on some equipment that I've ordered that's coming in. My sign should be coming in sometime this week. I had it made and everything, so that should be coming in and at place. With the carpentry work, I I just get to stick to paying people before they got to. I mean, that's just one of them things I I take for granted that, you know, I trust people to be able to do what they supposed to do. And when you, when you pay them, you know, you're expecting that to be done, and I'm really disappointed in that. But that's okay. As I told you in the beginning, I'm a fighter. I'm gonna keep on going. Let's see. Waiting on the equipment. I'll tell you about that and tell you about the sign. And I am just really pleased that the number of people that have stopped by and just, you know, wish me well, that means a whole lot. I I I've just been really related with that because it makes me feel good that the city is really looking after, you know, what I'm trying to do. And I'm hope, I'm hopefully, and I'm, and I'm sure that you will be, at my point in time of completing this, this project, that it's, it's gonna be a nice looking project, and it's gonna really make Darlington stand out. And I just, I just want to thank you all.
Are you going to have a grand opening or?
I plan, I plan a grand opening. I have not set a date for that as of yet. I want to try to get most of my stuff done so that I can kind of get you all to taste a little bit of food ahead, ahead of time, and see, see what you think, and then we have a, a big bang.
Good, well, maybe reach out to the chamber and see if they might be able to guide you a little bit, help you with that grand opening. That might give you some publicity that you might not regularly have access to.
Okay, thank you very much.
This your first time being in business?
Yes, this is the first time. I work with my brother, but I didn't have the business part on there. I I work for him, but I didn't know about how to do business, so I'm learning.
You learn what my daddy, my daddy only graduated from sixth grade, but he always taught me something. He said, I mean, learned something. One thing he always learned, which you already learned, is you don't pay for it, so it's villain, right?
There you go. That was my mistake. That was my mistake. You know, I'm paying you for it. But that's, that's okay. That's okay. Because I know a bit from this standpoint, that's not a problem.
We're ready for you to open up because everybody in Darlington loves you.
Oh, yeah. But I think you're gonna enjoy it as soon as I get completed, and hopefully it won't be too long. Okay, so y'all keep in your prayers.
Thank you.
Kevin, ma'am.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The Red Bar Council members, my name is Katrina Hare, and I am a native of Darlington. My street looks like a jungle, Jefferson Street. Whenever it needs to be cut, I usually have to call me a father to see if somebody got me a cut. Okay, the road stops and runs, one half to stop and the other one. Snakes I terrorize this time of year. They start coming out. I don't know why the street looks like this. They have these bamboo sticks going all the way up, all the way up. They can only cut a street. That's what they say. Now, I didn't do all my homework because I want to know who owns that property, because if they're not gonna do anything, and Mr. Gollum is there, I was told that they had to get in touch with the people, send them a letter out, and then they would have to reply, and they would give them ten days, you know, to get back to them. I don't know what's going on, but somebody needs to do something. If they're not gonna take care of property, it need to be cited. It need to do something because it looks horrible over there on my side of town, and I really want something done. And I don't want to call W. P. D. Fifteen and T. Thirteen so they can come and see how it looks over here, but it looks pretty rough. And it needs to be cut, but every time I have to call somebody to come and cut it, and they just run on the street, but those bamboo sticks, I mean, it's just, it's ridiculous. It shouldn't look like that.
What's your address?
My address is one thirty-three, and the house beside the lot that I'm talking about is one thirteen. So maybe they can come down here and do something because it is awful. It looks terrible. Thank you.
Like a lot that's in front of you, beside you that you're talking about? It's the lot that's beside you you're talking about?
No, it's not beside me. It's a couple of doors down. Like you're coming into Jefferson Street right from out of oil mill, and you turn in, it's one, two, three houses. And when you get to one thirteen, it's the lot right beside that house, one thirteen.
On the left side, right?
Yeah, going down, it would be on the left side. It's ridiculous.
Do you know where Melly Street deads in, at, at Jefferson, right behind it? It is the lot there. It starts there. It's right there, and that lot.
That lot and two more lots and one across the street.
Going towards Washington on that side, and it's been that way for years. And like she says, that's what she comes and comes, we have to add it.
What I've asked for is for every lot in town to get cleaned up and get them a notice. They don't get the notice, get it cleaned up. We get it cleaned up, and we give them a bill. They'll pay the bill, and they don't have a tax lien. They'll pay a tax lien, somebody, and get them to clean lots of.
It's been about seven years, and they still haven't done anything.
Jungle, and we got a number of places around town that people own, and there are some of them are locals, some on the way off, and they just let it go.
Well, they must have never sent papers out because I've been going through this for a couple of years, and anyway.
Ms. Hane, do you know whether or not persons who own to his deceased, or whether we're dealing with live people, living people?
Well, from what I heard, that the person that owns it is not deceased. I don't know. I tried to go to the courthouse to inquire about it, but like I said, I didn't do all my homework, and I decided to come over here tonight and discuss it, you know. But it could be, but after so many years, you know, and and they cut a little street through there because they said they're not allowed to go on the property and do anything, so it looks awful over there.
Your address is one thirteen?
I'm one thirty-three.
One thirty-three.
You know, the property beside it is one thirteen.
Yeah.
And he keeps his grass cut, but on the side of him, it's just like.
You can't even, you can't even see his house.
And see what's gonna happen. The road with people passing, you can't get by that way for one person to come by before the other car can go by, because you could cause a wreck, you know? The way the trees are growing up and growing over and growing all out in the street. You know when I called him last year, he came and had that little street cut through there, but it's time to end.
You can go on the county and check successes though.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna do, you know, I was gonna go down there and check.
You can do it on the internet.
Okay.
If you call me tonight, I'll look it up for you.
And see who it, if it belongs.
Call me when you get up late home tonight. I'll look it up.
Last year, they had a realtor sign, I don't remember which one, but the realtor was handling it.
I'd like you to say, Ms. Hane.
Can you be quiet for a minute? Just a little talk tonight. The water bill was raised too much during the pandemic. You couldn't know it because the city used it to raise, to raise to secure bond, to get the work done on Broad Street. Now you have a vacant building orders. When councils started to talk about the vacant commercial buildings downtown, it seems that it moved swiftly to vacant property all over the city, and that the vacant property was talked about. Was it talked about in council meeting? Was it done outside of the meeting? I didn't hear anything else about the houses, but I knew about the vacant buildings downtown. I'm for maintaining your property, keeping my yard manicured, paying my taxes, but not saying that I can't hold my house if I'm ready to sell it or hold it till I return to even for a summer home without being changed, changed, charged extra because it's vacant. That's ludicrous. And it seems to be double dipping away from buyers to buy up citizens' property who can't afford to pay the fee for the house being vacant. Everyone is not blessed to be born with a silver spoon in their mouth or with a high-paying job. It's enough to pay the taxes and maintain the yard. No money for high labor and supplies for high-dollar certified workers. One paper that I have shows a fee up to one thousand dollars for one to three years, and the other paper that I have, it says three thousand dollars for one to three years. Other fees are on the sheet also. Which one is correct? I guess the owner of a vacant house for longer than thirty days must register to get a form for the, for property exemption. The vacant property could be used as a storage, could be a vacant home, could be moving home in five years, et cetera. Could that be used? Or do you want to make the citizens pay extra fees? Seems like the city is asking too much from the citizens, telling citizens what they can or cannot do with their property other than paying the taxes and keeping surrounding area clean. Like I said before, this is ludicrous.
Thank you. Mrs. Hyde.
Good afternoon to the mayor, the city, and the city councils. My first reference, I wasn't at the last one meeting because of the weather and everything, and I wasn't feeling well. But I'm referring back, which is, this is May, April, which is that March meeting that I was at. And my first issue is that where that meet, where the mayor said, this is my meeting. And my thing on this, if we as citizens voted for you as a mayor of Darlington, and when it comes to the citizens, that includes all. It just can't be just about one person saying my meeting. That's just my way of feeling. I think there's a respectable way of talking to each other. I was here when we were talking to Mr. Lewis. He's a senior citizen of Darlington. He's been around here living in this city all this time. I think there's a better way of respecting people, and then we can agree and disagree. My other thing is, seems like every time I come to the meeting, it's all about the city of Darlington, the city of Darlington. My thing is, like you say, we got the oil mill that's smelling like crazy. You go around and your eyes burning, your nose running. Got a whole lot of senior citizens over there. They're not coming to these meetings because they're not, they're not able to come to the meeting. That's the same thing happened at this meeting over and over about the same oil mill. Nothing's being done. Seems like nobody cares because they're not living around it. When you're living around this every day and got to smell those fumes, it's not good at all. It's really not good at all. I just want it for me. Maybe there's something y'all can do with this oil mill. I know it's bringing that much of a progress that the people have to smell this every day. We have, you can't come out on your porch because it smells, it's terrible. It's a terrible smell to have to smell. And I said before, I'm speaking for some of the senior citizens that are living over there. I live around them. I know them. And that's not fair for us to have to go through this, and we're constantly going through this, and nobody's paying us any attention. It's the same thing. I've been coming to this council meeting over and over, even when we was at the pandemic, when I brought up again about the water. They wasn't gonna come to that either because this, we had a pandemic. Senior citizens are not coming out. Most of them don't even know about it. All they know is that what they're going through, and it's not fair. It's not fair to anybody. Like I say, everybody should be treated the same.
Mrs. Hyde. My understanding is we, we checked with the oil mill, but according to code and practice, there's nothing that the city can do about it because it's already situated for that type of environment, okay? That type of business. So according to my understanding is that they, they're through us, they have, or else they don't want to suppose to do it. City can't go over and close it down, and I agree, the smell smells bad, but again, you know, our hands are tied. The council can't go over and change it, so it's not that we don't want to do anything, but. So again, you know, there's a lot of little things that we'd like to do about other places of businesses too, that we, our hands are tied, we need to go to control with the way people do things. So again, that's, that's, you know, we're just trying to ignore it or anything. And since you did call my name, I'll, I'll address you, okay? The other day, okay, me and Mr. Lewis talking with each other, of course, you know, he got a little flustered, I got a little flustered. But when I say that it's my town, so that the whole world can hear this, this is my town, okay? You know, take it out of context, if anybody would like to take it out of context, but it's also your town.
Right.
And as I said, I don't have a whole lot of control of anything. I got one vote. I'm the poster boy. I'm the mayor poster boy, okay? But when anybody comes up for anything, they come to the mayor, okay? And I do have control of one thing. I'm supposed to have control of one thing, which is I'm supposed to control the council, the meeting, this meeting, okay? So when I say this is my meeting, it's all of our meeting. We're here to get it. Everything that's done in the city of Darlington is not done because Curtis wants it. It's done because Curtis might want it, but he can't get it unless the rest of them. Mr. Millian might want it. He can't get it unless we all want it. In fact, it's the same way. Mr. Nettles, Mr. Millian, Mr. Seegers, Mr. Gardner, Mrs. Reed, all of us. Okay, we all want lots of things, but we all have to work to get it. So, but this is, I'm in control of the council, okay? So I don't own anybody. I don't own, I don't own myself, yeah, but I am happy to be here and work for everybody, but I do try to control the council, okay? That's my, that's my job, okay? Keep it to work. We all work together and not get out of, out of hand.
Yeah, I understand that. We just got there last week.
Again, you know, with the oil mill and all that, we, we try, and with, and so everybody understands with the water bill, you know, we're, you know, they keep bringing about the water bills, some of that. We're here to try to, to make sure, like, if it lasts us to, to lower it back, we will look for it back if we can, you know, we've got to, we're trying to keep control of what we got, where we can get us out of the hole to where we can provide good clean water and land for everybody, and Mr. Shigart comes doing a fantastic, fantastic job of going out his crew, going out, making sure that the water lines are being fixed and repaired, and that just takes a lot, a lot of money, and we don't, we won't raise anybody's money. And so we're trying our best to accommodate a good source of the money that we have for.
Okay, I understand that.
Just before you leave, and there, just a couple of months ago, because of this, I did go and, and, and meet with the, the owner or the manager that was out there. And they are trying to find some kind of filter. It hasn't come, but because of the, because of the complaints, and, and you're not the only one, and they are aware of, of the community and, and us being seniors. But they are trying to, from my understanding, to try to get some type of filter to help with it, with the, with the smell. However, they did indicate that the, what you are smelling is not harmful to you, a card to de-hack. Can be for those of us who suffer with, with all kinds of allergies and things of that sort, yeah. I'm in the same boat, so. But anyway, that was, I mean, I don't know whether you met with the citizen or not, but that's been several months ago. They've been trying to work with.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
And as far as that water bill is concerned, I've checked with other cities around us in different areas, and our water bills is questionable. Meaning that cities around us that I spoke with have periodically checked to make sure the meters are working properly. City of Darlington haven't had their meters checked.
City of Darlington haven't had their meters checked to be sure that they are properly working. They're only gonna do, go along with just charging you excessively and not even want to find out whether the meters are properly working or not. Because I bought it to Mr. Payne and I bought it to Shoe Guard, that we needed to periodically check our meters.
Right.
But they don't want to do that. They're just sending out notices, oh, you got a water leak, without verifying that all the meters are properly working. Because I've, citizens steady contacting me about $300 water bills, $250 water bills. And they're checking and no leaks. But Payne and Shoe Guard is refusing to even address having our meters randomly checked to be sure they're working properly.
How great, how great. Their, their water bill, I want to make sure, we got a lot of bad pipes and things, you know, Mr. Sugar, Mr. Payne, if anybody's got a problem with their water bill, they can take it up and they'll always address it. Thank you for your time, thank you.
Okay, but what did you say, about they have a problem? When did they?
If you got a problem with your water bill, you always can bring it up and they can question, see what's going on with it, see if there's a leak. And if the meter, if the meter's running on one side, if the meter's running, then that means there's water leaking from the other side. The meter's not running, and it's, and there's water coming out the road, that means there's a leak from our side. If the meter's running, if there's a meter running, it's going through that pipe, it's going through that meter, and that means there's a leak from that side and the customer's side. And again, the customers have always, times passed, and they're still, I'm sure, they were doing that, they come up with a major leak, um, that they'll address that and say something's going on.
Only if the meter's working properly.
Okay, thank you.
They're not all working properly.
Oh. Public hearing, thank you all for your comments. All right, public hearing, okay? Amendment to regular city council meetings start time, uh, public comment. Anybody for that, please? A public hearing? Please. Any comments on the public hearing?
I haven't received any, anything in the mail or email.
All right.
For either.
Okay, so the comments on that. All right, uh, B, zoning designation for property of Richmond and Spring Streets. Okay, all right, very good. All right, unfinished business, second reading ordinance 2022-04, amendment to regular city council meeting start time and public comment. Mr. Payne?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the last meeting, I proposed starting the meetings 30 minutes earlier at six o'clock. I also had a proposal, which was, y'all had asked me to change it, which I have, included total time, a lot of the public comment at 30 minutes, which was council's request, and speakers will be allowed up to five minutes. That's incorporated into the amended ordinance.
Do you have a motion to approve?
I make a motion that we approve the second reading ordinance, 2022-04, amendment to the regular city council meeting start time and public comment.
I'll second.
Mr. Millen? Nettles? Miss Backus? Mr. Seagars? Okay? Questions, carry? Thank you. Next week, well, next month, we'll start at six o'clock.
Start at six o'clock.
Sure, if the public knows and everyone under knows, and they come up, we'll start at six o'clock instead of six thirty. Okay, second reading ordinance, 2022-05, zoning designation of, for property at Richmond and Spring Streets. Mayor?
Yes, Mayor and Council. This property is being cleared at the corner of Richmond and Spring Streets for construction. We previously voted to annex the property into the city, and now it needs a zoning designation. It previously, for some reason, was already listed with a zoning designation on our map, even though it wasn't in the city. But the planning commission reviewed it, and an R six zoning designation, which is what was on the map, seemed suitable to them and suitable to the property owners. And so that is what we're asking council to approve. No, nobody has commented by email, phone call. I've not received anything other than people asking about the city over there. And it will be five or six hours.
I'll make a motion that we approve second reading ordinance 20 dash, sorry, 2022-05, the zoning designation for property at Richmond and Spring Streets to be toned as R six high-density residential, and this property is reflected as tax map number 164-06-01-103.
Second.
Mr. Nettles?
Yes, sir.
Miss Backus? Mr. Gardner?
Hi.
Mr. Seagars?
Hi.
Very good questions, carry? Thank you. All right, new business, uh, first reading ordinance 2022-06, fiscal year 2023, budget and title only.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, it's that time of year again. Tonight is just reading entitled only, which, which, um, suffices the law. And I'll, I'll read this. What I plan to do is ask that on May, get the dates right, Tuesday, Wednesday, May 24th and 25th, we'll have our budget workshops. We'll get everything ironed out there, and either by the June meeting or early within the June, we'll have second reading at our conference. I've been working with county treasurer, our audit people out of West Columbia, and the, um, county assessor's office. I've been watching the revenues, as I mentioned when I, when I interviewed for this child budget service, revenue driven, and I want to make sure that we've got the revenue sufficient for the expenditures, but, um, tonight is entitled only and all. I'll read this, it's ordinance number 2022-06, an ordinance to make appropriations for ordinary municipal purposes for the city of Darlington and for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2022, and ending June 30th, 2023, to provide for the expenditures thereof and to provide the revenues for the payment thereof as amended.
Mr. Payne, I'm gonna make a motion to approve it, but just with general information, will we not need a, a public hearing on this?
We will.
Approximately when, since we got some of the public here, approximately when would that occur?
We have to post, at least I believe it's two weeks before final reading, we have to post in the paper, um, so we'll, we will have it there.
Okay, so we, we probably, if we got workshops on the 24th, 25th, in order to have a public hearing and then have the approval, we wouldn't be able to do that, um, or would we at the June meeting, or would we need a special meeting?
We do workshops on the 24th and 25th. This is, if on the next day we ran, um, the advertisement and, and posted it per the law, we could do it, 15 days would be early June, we, our next meeting's June 7th. So that would give us time. Or if you felt, if the council felt that we needed to go a little longer, we could go into the next week. I just don't want to wait until the last week of June, I want to get this done in the first several weeks of June.
That's the reason I raised it, just that.
Yes, sir.
I'm sure everybody was aware of time, Frank.
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve first reading of ordinance number 2022-06, which is an ordinance to make appropriations for ordinary municipal purposes for the city of Darlington fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022, and ending June 30, 2023, to provide for the expenditures thereof and to provide for revenues for the payment thereof as amended, with this being a first reading, um, with respect to the title on the.
I'll second.
Mr. Nettles? Miss Backus? Ms. Reed? Mr. Seagars?
Hi.
Very good questions, carry? Thank you. All right, initiation, initiating open period to accept applications from nonprofits from hospitality tax funding?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. The state, excuse me, the city collects 2% hospitality tax on all prepared, uh, food and beverages in the city. The procedure that the city has used up until now is to, when anybody, any nonprofit wanted a contribution, if you will, uh, they just came any, any time during the year. Other municipal or other county governments that I've worked for had a, had a season, if you will, a period where applicants came, presented their request, a committee was assigned, volunteers, citizen volunteers, to review everything and make a recommendation to council. It was only a certain period of time, if, if an entity applied, they were considered. If they didn't apply during that period, they had to wait until the next year. I'm just trying to get us to, to follow a more structured schedule so that you only have to deal with hospitality tax requests once a year. My proposal is, after the budget's complete in June and July to accept applications, uh, then between September and October, uh, this committee will review and make recommendations to council. By fall, uh, you can determine how much you want to allot to whatever entities there. You'll, this will also give you the ability to determine as a council, how much you want to spend out of your hospitality tax fund, and then be done with it for a year. And that is, it's a greater accounting of your funds, if you will. All I'm asking for, there's really nothing to, to vote on, just kind of looking for council's blessing to move forward with this. A committee, you could set up a committee, eat several ways, the city's got several boards and commissions, I believe we could set one up in that manner, or if you wanted, and this is up to y'all, uh, each council member could appoint one person. Or we could go and ask for citizen volunteers and everybody submit applications. I'm gonna leave that up to council.
I was making one suggestion earlier, that we also include not just nonprofit, mostly nonprofit, I know there are sometimes there are for-profit businesses hosting something that is beneficial to the city, that if the committee decided that they wouldn't exclude us, they would exclude that, exclude them as long as there's something that's benefiting the city.
That's something council does.
We've talked about this before, I'm trying to have a structure. Council just needs to think about, whether you want it to be us, or you want, you want us to select one person, or, uh, I don't know, or do you want to be the one to decide?
Or we could open it up, we could, we'd have to create a, a committee, so we'd have to go through that structure. And then when people apply, or what might be more expeditions is just for each council member to appoint one person. They'd only have to serve generally about two months out of the year, just a couple meetings, it's not gonna be very abhorrent.
And the committee then, after they receive the applications, the committee then would submit that to council, for council to make the final decision?
Yes, ma'am, and, and whatever the committee, uh, recommended would not tie council's hands, those are simply recommendations, just something you recommend. Yes, they do, take their recommendations.
Probably. But we will receive, even if they're gonna make a recommendation of who they suggest, we will receive the whole list.
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
I'm not, I'm not saying just what they suggest, but everybody who applied.
Yes, ma'am.
So everybody give, Mr. Payne, move forward with that?
Yeah.
Yes.
If they all want to try, they would wear, each one of us pick one person, or how you want to?
Yeah.
Fine. Makes it more efficient. That's fine with me. That way it's representative of the council. Pretty good?
As, as we go along, you'll determine how much money, and it, and you can change it every year, one year, you know, it could be X, and let's say it's $50,000, next year it could be $70,000, whatever, whatever the funds are available, uh, that council would determine, uh, how much is available at that point.
You just, you're building that into your budget?
Yes, sir.
To start, to, start July the 1st?
Yes. I would, by then, when we go through the workshops, I'll just, y'all be thinking about how much you might want to allocate for next year. And we'll include it.
All right.
Could you, could you get us a, a number together of what we traditionally have done for, like, Fest and Chamber and ERA?
I'll just go back.
To ones that we've traditionally done for, to try to help, and to put it back in, uh, what, so that way we know how much we've traditionally done.
I will, I'll go back a few years and we can give you some numbers over several years. And I'll, I'll give them this, pretty good about that.
Okay. Thank you. All right, um, let's see, hospitality tax bond reimbursement to hospitality tax fund?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. If you remember in our last meeting, we received legal counsel from our bond attorney. In 2017, the city took out a, a bond, uh, on our hospitality tax revenues, uh, of 1.9 million, it's down to about 744,000, but because of IRS regulations and the taxes that status associated with that bond, those bonds, by June 15th of this year, you have to have that money spent down to $285,000, which is 15% of the original bond. The bond attorney explained that we could reimburse ourselves for any, any legitimate expenses from the H tax fund or from the general fund. And I got with, with Ms. Priggin, you got in your packet a list, and this goes back to 2019 because he said I could only go back that far. And this shows $461,845.35 that's been spent out of hospitality tax that we can reimburse ourselves. So basically, we have given money from the, um, H tax bond back to the H tax fund. And I just need a vote to, for you to give me permission to do that.
Move the money, but it's understood that we're moving the money, it still will stay there for sports complex or whatever we need in there.
Or whatever. Yes, sir. This is required, and otherwise we jeopardize the bonds.
I'll motion to approve the hospitality tax bond reimbursement to the hospitality tax fund.
Second.
Mr. Millen? Mr. Nettles? Miss Backus? Seagars?
Hi. Very good, thank you. Questions, carry?
Thank you.
All right, uh, new business, purchase of a mowing tractor for sports complex and, uh, the drawing.
Don't worry, he knows, but I'm just gonna give you one, just so you can have it, just in case.
Good evening. Uh, Mr. Payne's handing, handing out the, um, yeah, the, the drawing. Talk about the, the tractor and the drag machine for the, the new sports complex. That is a state contract through Rebel Tractor, at Alamo River Beach, it's John Deere Equipment. What you should have is a tractor with a front-end loader, a 72-inch bush hog, a 72-inch finishing mower, and a hydrostatic, um, drag machine, which is used to drag ball fields. And I think the total will come in a little under, right at $49,000 for the two pieces of equipment. That's, that's pretty cheap, um, for brand-new pieces of equipment, like we're, we're looking to, um, get for. And, and that, we can use it now, and it'll, it'll carry over into the complex, it'll, it can also be used out there now to cut the, the growth out there now. Right there in the quote.
Motion to approve the purchase of a mowing tractor for the sports complex at $49,294.79.
Now, before, before you go on, I want you to make, I want to make sure that you noted that it is two pieces of equipment. One of it is a tractor to cut grass, the other is a, a, basically a tractor that drag ball fields. So I just wanted to make sure that you knew, that you get two pieces of equipment.
For that amount.
Right.
Second.
It's state contract.
Okay.
We got first and second.
Mr. Millen? Mr. Nettles? Miss Backus? Mr. Seagars? Okay? Questions, carry?
All right, the drawing from, I think it was Wallace come in, actually come in this week, um, and as you can feel- And as you can feel, see, there's eight fields there. Um, six 300-foot fields, two 200-foot fields, um, two four-field clover pods. It's got the, all the amenities that, that we wanted, except for the, um, the go-kart track. There just was, to, to incorporate that in there, there wasn't enough area to accommodate, uh, the parking and the, the extra stuff that would go along with that. But everything else is included in there. You got pickleball courts, you got, um, beach volleyball, you've got basketball, um, skate park. There's the amphitheater, um, which is gonna be a, a meadow, an open space, that we can host concerts, or you can host, um, you can just go out there and hang out and have a picnic, we can have city picnics, whatever in that spot. You have the Frisbee Golf Course, you have multiple trails that you can go through, um, asphalted and non-asphalted trails. There's even a parcel that you have, the, the blown-up drawing of, that's two acres taken out, that you can either lease out or sell outright to a, a restaurant or store. I think what we have in the drawing here is a convenience store. It's got everything we wanted. And what, what we're looking at doing tonight is, you bless it, or just take it as information, or whatever, but the faster that we can say, this is what you want, um, the faster we can get the renderings done, and move closer to, um, getting this thing built.
According to Mr. Bazingo, his layout, correct me if I'm wrong now, but his layout was designed according to the way the, the savings money for the way the land is structured, and actually using the pond that there is a retention pond.
Right, and, and actually using the, using it as a retention pond, plus you can use it as an irrigation pond. The reason it has taken so long for him to get the drawings is because he was waiting on the taco survey. So he could get the lay of the land, and he could put it up, he could place stuff where it needed to be. So we wouldn't have to spend a lot of money moving dirt. You still gonna have to move, you still gonna have to move some dirt, but you're not gonna have to move as much dirt around as, as if you put the field on another side or at the back part of property.
The, the left-hand side is harder to see with this drawing here, but, um, the left-hand side where it says Frisbee Golf, it's my understanding that that's gonna be, basically the woods are still gonna be there, so it's gonna be cut through.
Right.
So that saves us a lot of, we don't have to cut all the wood, cut all the woods down. Uh, the front corner, where we turn into the dog pound, he designed that section to where, if we're able to, uh, put H and S, uh, floors, uh, sports complex on it, and Mr. Mill, Mr. Siggers pays us $500,000 a year to, to do that, then, um, me and him go find that location. I'd love for a million, but I think Genesis is gonna come up and say, we're about that corner there. But it's a good corner there, he's got a real good design to where we.
You're going, the, the design is, if you're coming in from Dogland, so they need to know our full way. The entrance is right there at the red light on the other side of the, the water tower. And as you come in, you will come in through a wooded area, and it's gonna open up into the complex.
Well, he's got it laid, he's got it laid out where you actually can come into the complex from beside Mayflower, correct?
Exactly.
And it also has where you can come in beside it, isn't that the convenience store, or restaurant, or whatever? We can, we can put there. The purpose of that is so that it would generate funds back into the city. Then you also have another entrance, which will be the main entrance going down, what I call, I'm sure the name of the road was, where you get to the dog pound, but, I mean, society, uh, to go in, so that way somebody will be able to come in and out from a red light. The, uh, the amphitheater, we hadn't asked for the amphitheater, but again, um, my understanding is if he was to draw that, we don't, of course, we don't, we won't be able to build all this in one period of time.
We're not married, we're not married to anything on this draw.
They could just be left as a plain green space.
Right, we're, that's what I was gonna say, he, you're not married to anything on this draw.
And so that everybody's gonna, so everybody has an idea of the amphitheater, where he's got in the middle there, it says Event Meadow. My understanding, he said that's about three or three and a half acres. So you kind of get an idea of like what you're looking at there. That's, that little spot there is three acres. The convenience store at the front, it's locked on two acres to be able to sell at least.
Would you add?
So is it done, so that it's built in stages, or can it be built in stages?
Yes, sir.
It can be phased out just as it is?
I just would like to see us get started.
You and me both.
What do we need to do to move to the next stage?
I can make a motion for him to.
You wanted to go forward with the rendering? That would be what the motion would be tonight, that you're happy with what's on this piece of paper, um, that you like that design. If there's something on there that sticks out that you won't move, um, we can move it, we, you can move it around. But the rendering, he's not gonna do until you approve this. That way, we're not charged twice for two different things. There's just.
Does rendering cost?
It's in the, it's in the cost, it's in the contract, he does two for us. So the, this is, before he goes on and does one and does it, and then you're not happy, then he would have to charge us for another one after that, so.
The only small change that I may would ask for is the pond. If there's any way to enlarge it a little bit where it's really thin? I know, I went kiting to it, it's only like a foot, maybe foot and a half deep, so.
You want it deeper?
Deeper and/or a little wider.
And I don't think that would be as far as, that would be, I mean, we could, that would be something after the, the rendering phase probably that we would go into.
I think it's all right now, but there's, there's still room there, because to the right of that is trees, is that correct?
Right.
And to the left is the amphitheater, which we, we really don't want an amphitheater, I think. I don't think I want one.
I don't want one.
I'd like to have a green spot there, in the, the green space, but again, if we could afford an amphitheater, it's fine. Again, there's room there that if we decided, you know, the road, we could still do that anytime.
Gotcha.
Fine, my man.
So this way he can get a ready drawing going, and then we can work on deciding if you want to hire an outside source to move it. So then we'll start moving forward, get some numbers together, get the public seeing what we've, what we've been working on.
I'd like to approve to move forward with the architectural, architectural rendering.
And I'll second.
Mr. Milligan, Mr. Nettles, Mrs. Backus? Mr. Siggers? Alright, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Siggers.
I appreciate that. I'll stay right here, 'cause I think I might be in part of E2.
Okay, discussion of opening city swimming pool?
Alright, that, this month, this past month, we were, we were all approached by Ms. Diane Cohen and Ms. Lily Brunson about the use of the swimming pool. Um, when COVID hit back in 2020, pools, pools been shut down for a couple of years. Um, but it's been covered, don't know what it looks like underneath the covering, um, because the city has always contracted out, through a local pool company to actually run the pool itself. Because we have no, we have no staff members, that, we don't have a, a pool operator, um, on staff. So it's always been contracted out. I know, um, Lisa Bailey actually searched last year to try to find somebody to open it, just for partial season. Nobody replied, um, to be, even bid on opening it. We have contacted people on behalf of the city this season, and, um, we actually had a lady call back today and say, and that, this was this afternoon, and say that they, they don't do that. But she gave us the name of a guy that may be interested, um, but I'll, I'll be honest with you. We've been told that before, and never, you know, go out there to show up, to show them around, and they never show up, so. That's the predicament you are in as far as the city pool goes, um. I'm just giving you the information.
I appreciate it. Um, so, um, I've had just folk in the area that would like to see it, uh, operating, but if we can't, and it's such a, um, liability, that, you know, I can't, I don't know which way for us to do it, and if we do not have anybody to, um, any of the, the pool companies to say that they will operate if we don't get in the legitimate one, I'm not sure. What did you?
Well, I'd like to make a suggestion. The kids need something to do, um, but again, that is a, I always wanted to have a pool in my, in my facility, but they always say that's a money pit, and it sure is. And it's a major, major liability, because, and we've had, in the past, have lost their lives there, so, you know, to, to have somebody to watch it, watch the children there, and take a good chance of somebody getting hurt. I would like to suggest that we look real, and I'll just say it, but look strongly at putting two splash pads, nice splash pads, in C, for the amount of money that's been spent there, um, over the two years while we were closed. Yeah, and there was a lot spent over those two years, um, when the past city manager was here. Uh, I think that we probably put a nice splash pad over by the, by the stage areas of Miss Reed, and maybe one over by the Hampton Street, and horses. Two nice working pads for the kids in the areas to, to be able to play. I don't know, that's a suggestion.
Well, I'm not opposed to the splash pads. I mean, I like those as well.
The splash, the splash pad is, I don't think, again, we need to find that for sure, what the maintenance is on it, but there's nowhere near the maintenance that there is. They don't have a lifeguard there or anything.
What does a pool cost just from month to month?
It would, uh, thirty, over what we've done for, it would take us $25,000 to open it for three months.
What was spent the last, do you have the numbers on that?
Yes sir, um, to open it for the two and a half to three months, it was just over $20,000.
I'm saying what was spent over the last, do you have those numbers?
Oh, well, since 2018, $134,000.
And that was during COVID?
You said that was what now?
That's what we questioned last.
Now, there was a lot of construction involved in that, bringing it up to, to COVID. I, I don't know what shape it was years ago, but there was a lot of construction going on. But, but it'll take $20,000 to $25,000 for two and a half months.
That was in 2019 and 2020?
He said by 2019.
2019, 2020, most recent.
And 2020, I think some was spent 2021. We questioned that last year, the budget, what was so much spent?
But, okay, last year, uh, the question was because it seemed like there was overspending, right? I mean, but have we been able to justify what all that is? I mean, was there construction of?
During the last city manager was here, there was a lot done, the last city manager was here, there were questions why, why those bills were being spent.
Yeah.
And paid for, and then we, we didn't, we didn't have anything left.
I didn't know what limited knowledge I have of pools. Um, when DHEC tells you to do something to open it, you best do it to open it, or they will shut it down. Um, and a lot of those safety concerns, um, are passed along, and I know the pump was bad at one point in time. They redid some deckwork, they did away with the kiddie pool. Um, yeah, supposed to cover it, all that stuff was, was done in the past three years.
So, so what I'm hearing is necessary. I mean, it's just things that was absolutely necessary if we were going to use it.
Right.
It had to be, these things had to be done.
Exactly, and, and that's an ongoing thing. That's just not the get it at code, and then it's gonna be that at code. That's the get it at code, and you've got to keep spending money to keep it at code.
Keep it like that.
So in order to run the pool this summer, you're saying it's gonna cost 25, 20 to 25,000 dollars?
Between 20 and 25,000 dollars.
So that's roughly, if we, even if we said 25, so you're talking roughly $8,000 a month? Okay, so, I don't think $8,000 a month is a lot. Reason being is Freedom Fest. We spent $15,000 on Freedom Fest for four hours. When they did, um, the fireworks, we gave the chamber $15,000 for firecrackers. So now you gonna sit here and tell me $25,000 for three months is too much for a pool?
I'm not gonna tell you that.
So that's thirty, that's thirty?
What we would have to.
No, no, I'm not saying you personally, I'm just making a statement.
I got you.
I'm not saying you personally.
Mr. Andrews, is it 25,000 dollars for the whole summer, or 25,000 dollars to get it started?
The whole summer.
No, that's the whole summer.
So you're saying, so.
Somebody's gonna man it, and they're maintaining it, like, for a month?
If we, if, if the city had gone to pay somebody to man it, and then with the salaries that I said of, which I think was at like $15 an hour for a pool operator, and $12 an hour for op, uh, lifeguards, plus the startup costs, plus for chemicals, um, it'd be between 20 and 25,000 dollars.
If you can find someone.
By to run it.
Right, because that's the part of, we still have to get someone to.
There, there more maintenance that's gonna be done to it, 'cause we.
I don't know, I really don't know, because the pumps haven't been, from, from my experience, there's the pump that haven't been called in two years.
Alright, the question is, my question is, did they give you a bill that they wanted to do some work for $9,000?
Reseal the, um.
Did they give us a bill that we turned down?
No, that was $7,500.
And what was that for?
It was, I believe something to do with the deck, I like.
Reseal the concrete?
So, but, but they didn't do it, they haven't done that?
That is just, if it was, if you were able to flip and switch tomorrow, cut it on, that would be the operating cost for the summer.
So roughly $8,000 a month, compared to $30,000 for eight hours of firecrackers and playground equipment.
I don't know if you got eight hours worth of firecrackers out there.
That sounds like a big difference to me. $30,000 for 10 hours, $25,000 for three months.
We don't, we don't know what the cost might be in order to bring it up to where we could spend $25,000 if we had somebody up. So it's $25,000 plus whatever is necessary to open the door, and DHEC is not expected to tell us what it costs.
And then this is contingent of, can we break it up, if we get any kind of response from someone that, a company that would handle it?
Yes ma'am.
Okay.
And on top of that, just thinking about other monies that we've spent, I think we spent probably quarter of a million dollars in Williamson Park to build some bridges, to bring it up to park.
That was grant money.
It's the way the money was spent in Williamson Park, to fix the park.
Yep.
To walk across some bridges.
If somebody gives you grant money, they tell you this is all you're gonna do with it, so tell them to revolve it.
Some of that was city money, some of that money came from the city.
Alright, you're, are you in a position to contact DHEC and see what DHEC said would have to be done before, while we're at the same time, looking to see if we can find an operator?
We can, we can make that.
That might give you a better idea of whether we got $5,000 upfront cost for it.
Well, DHEC's probably not gonna be able to give us a call so they can tell us what needs to be done to get it open, but we, what we need to find is a pool operator that y'all are happy with, that.
Right.
Can do it.
Can you come back with us before, before June meeting, can you, if we have to tell them to meet, can you go ahead and decide? Give us some regular numbers so we know what we're designing?
Cause it may be a new project, we don't have an operator.
We can find a pool operator that city council is happy with, that will come do that. And yes, I can do that. If not, can you make them come?
Well, now, you're in, you're in sort of position now too, so you're talking about people being on month, two months out. I mean, I'm having a spot on my pool, and they're two months out.
Well, yeah, exactly, and, and usually, um, I mean, Neptune Island's opening the 14th, which is been a week and a half, so pools are opening, um.
So let's get on, and see what we can do, and let us know.
Right. As a plant bee, though, I want us to at least look into having the splash pads, bring that back.
Can you give surprises on that?
Yes.
Please.
We'll be here on 24th.
That'd be something. Alright, just, bye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, now, promotion going through city, uh, video advertising? All right, now, promotion going to through city vehicle advertising.
I was asked to, early on, the numbers, and you have this sheet, should have been in your packet earlier, but I put another one on your desk here today. Just to give the prices, if we were to, since no businesses have contacted me showing any interest whatsoever of putting their logos or advertising on city vehicles. We do have the price, the bid price from News and Press to improve, and we could advertise ourselves. Our city businesses, our shop local, something like that. That is an option. If you were to do all six trucks, both sides of the trucks, the cost would be sixty-two forty, six thousand two hundred and forty dollars. If you wanted to do some sort of monthly business of the month, or something like that on a vehicle magnet, seventy-five dollars per magnet. For all six trucks, you're talking four hundred and fifty bucks for one time. And if you changed it every month, it'd be fifty-four hundred dollars. So if you were to do that for an entire year, that'd be eleven thousand six hundred and forty.
Well, maybe, maybe if we as the city advertised just for a few months, we do it on a monthly basis, might attract some other businesses to do it.
I was a fellow behind this, we promote our own places, but once you've had the sixty-two forty, the trucks are, will look better, they're up there, they're advertising what was loaded, you wanna put on there beside the truck for city drive. The business of the month could be done every quarters, every month, that way you don't have to change it. You can do two businesses up there, the one business on four trucks, and another business on the other four trucks to let your local businesses, to make them happy, and bring people back into the city, and also spend money, and bring back money back into Darlington. Just to show our residents and the business owners that we appreciate their businesses, we love them. Yes, ma'am.
I have just a curiosity question.
No, I'm not.
This proposal from News and Press, they got the bid in twenty twenty-one.
It was for three years.
It was three years. Were they still willing?
Yes. They were very interested in doing it, and that is, includes installation costs. That's them creating it and putting it on the truck.
So the thought was, if you did a business of the month, or you just changed it to business of the quarter, that you could, during the city council meeting, put the name of the business in a pot, and then pull out a name. They, H and S force, keep pulling you out.
Just eleven thousand dollar cost, it would not be revenue.
Correct. Yeah, this is, this is just the cost of the installation.
When we started, we were looking at hopefully a revenue stream.
Correct.
But that's not what happened.
That's not working.
The revenue stream would have been above, it would have been, instead of sixty-two forty to do all trucks, both sides, it would have been a significant amount above that.
Sixty-two, sixty-two forty is still hoping for a revenue stream, because you're hoping that you're gonna provide people to come in shopping, the local residents, which will bring more money back into the tent.
It would be advertised in the city.
The business really said, after one summer actually sees it, and obviously it looks good, they may say, I would pay the ultimate money.
Can we just do one or two, and start that way? Is it that generates versus doing all of them? Can it generate?
What was the question?
I asked if you could just do one or two vehicles to start it, is if that generates any interest, rather than doing all the vehicles and not knowing what's gonna happen. It's a lot less of an investment.
You can do the ones that go out more with the picker truck, or the garbage trucks, the garbage trucks are out more, right?
Yeah, the garbage trucks are out.
So you can do the garbage trucks first, they're out every day, right? You can do the garbage trucks, and then you start with that?
Do I do a lack campaign?
Do you have any trucks to drive with?
They were saying the garbage trucks.
Is the garbage trucks out more? The garbage trucks are out every day, so it would be...
They work twenty days. Cycling day.
Do you wanna do the, where Southern Hospitality and History Meet, or Shop Local? Shop Darlington?
I wouldn't do Eat Local, because then the people that don't have restaurants would think we're not supporting them. I would even say Shop Local, Shop Darlington, or either where Southern Hospitality and History Meet or Southern History. We can do a walk-up and bring it back, if everybody's fine, before we do anything, bring it in there, we bring a walk-up back to the council, we're free to look at next time.
You wanna do that?
Yeah.
I'm trying to bring a walk-up. We'll get the trash cooked, and have it done on Peter. Bring it to you to look at.
Where Southern Hospitality and History Meet?
Yeah, that's good.
Of course, if it's, it's two trucks, that's two trucks, two sides, it's four sides. So you could, you know, do more than one of these.
One of each side of the truck.
Yeah, I mean, you could do one on each side, yeah.
Well, we'll do a couple different walk-ups where you look at, and we get, you pick. Some of the different, what size, what size? All right, I'll review bids for water filter rehab at Pine Street, Edward Avenue.
Please.
Please.
The council meeting, y'all asked me to get together a price, quotes for rehabbing a water filter at our Edward and Pine Street Water Filter Plant. I advertised it on Ski Boat, which is South Carolina Business Opportunity Division of the Procurement Services of South Carolina. That's where the state contract purchases are located. It's legal, it's legal notice to all contractors for requests for bids for this project. We received one. And I have it here.
It just came in, maybe today?
They, in our advertisement, we said that they would have to be delivered here by six o'clock, and this is the only one we received. Contractors' legal names, North American Construction Company. Two hundred eighty-seven thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars.
Is that, if that's in the right range of, you know?
When we first started looking at this thing last year, they estimated the cost to be sixty thousand dollars.
Put back out a bid, sir.
Well, when you put it out to bids, it's gonna double the price, everybody knows that. Anytime you bid it, it's gonna at least double. But we sure didn't expect it to go up four times.
Could you explain, just for the benefit of the public, what this would do? What this does for the citizens?
The filter itself, I'll have to get into a little bit of treatment. We, in this area, and this is not just the city of Darlington, but everybody located in the coastal plain, and we're considered to be in the upper coastal plain, has a certain amount of iron in the water. And iron itself is not toxic, but the levels can be damaging to your plumbing, and can cause other problems. So we remove some iron. In doing so, they create a lime iron slurry by the addition of lime and oxygen into the water in an aeration chamber. I don't get too much into detail here, but they create this iron-lime sludge. Well, that has to be filtered out of the water, and that's what these filters do. The filters are large cylinders, metal cylinders, that have different sizes of media in them. And the first is a layer of real fine sand, and then it gets into heavier sand, and then it gets into a layer of gravel, and then the last layer is a layer of anthracite, which gives the water a more pleasant taste. It's a charcoal filter, if you will. And we measure the amount of iron in the water prior to the filter, and of course, after the filter. And at some point, all of our filters are gonna fail, or begin to fail. And it should happen very, very slowly. And when that happens, it's known as breakthrough. In other words, the sludge or the iron and the lime are breaking through the filter. That hasn't occurred in any of our filters. However, they have all been in operation for a long time. And the Pine Street and Edward Street Water Filter Plant has been in use more than all of our other water plants. It takes the life, it probably does eighty percent of all the water that's been produced in Darlington over the last ten years or so. I don't know prior to that. However, these components, just like everything made by man, are gonna break down. The cylinder itself, the metal is gonna corrode at some point. The media inside the filters, and this pea gravel, and this anthracite are at some point gonna get clogged with this iron-lime slurry that we're creating. And we backwash that every day that they use it. They pour water through it, and they also backwash it to clean it. But at some point, it's gonna get saturated with this iron-lime slurry that it's gonna be impossible to clean. So what we're talking about, and the cylinder itself, the interior walls of the cylinder are gonna break down. If it gets mellowed, it's just gonna happen. So at some point, we're gonna need to drain them all. Look at the condition of the filter, and repack them again. And that's what this project is.
Charles, so...
That was enough detail.
So at this point, what, what are we gonna do? What's your advice?
Well, we, my advice is, we haven't had breakthrough yet. So I say we wait to do this project and try to fund it in the next fiscal year through other sources. Either through another grant of some type, or a USD ARD loaning grant, which we can get, or just a loan from the, from another agency, State Revolving Fund. And there could be a possibility that we can even get forgiveness of those loans through the State Revolving Fund. So that's real free money, and not like grant money. No, grant money's not free. So, but if we get forgiveness of the principal of a loan, that is free money. And there's a possibility that we could do that. The State Revolving Fund has funded a lot of projects, and has granted a good bit of principal forgiveness over the past year, and most of those projects, I have a list of them, I print them out every month, I look at them. And almost every one of them are water projects. They aren't, they aren't giving money away in sewer projects. But we've gotta meet some criteria for them, and I have talked to the guy that's over that section more than once a month since I've been here, trying to get him to fund some projects for us, or do principal forgiveness, and a project. But we haven't been able to meet quite all of his criteria yet in any project that I've talked to him about. And what we've always been doing is talking so far, we haven't spent any money trying to get one.
So if you had a failure, how long would it take from failure to completion to correct the situation?
With this project, this, this bid is ninety days. So, you know, it should be ninety days or less.
What he's asking is if, if you wait, six months down the road, correct me if I'm wrong, Howard. He's asking if, six months down the road, we say we go wait, six months down the road, it does fail.
Right.
And we gotta go out and fix it.
We, yeah.
How long would it take?
Well, I was, ninety days or less. Now, remember, we have four of these.
Does that mean that we can, per se, shut one off and shut it down?
We can, and we don't really have to shut it down. It may be that we just don't produce as much from Pine and Edward Street for a period of time. And rely on one of our other water plants for the lion's share of our water.
All right.
Thank you. Sorry for the busy work.
All right. Before you go, I wanna ask, I know this don't have a... Did we ever get the bid, the last bid for the lift station? I never heard anything back at King Yamburts, Limb, Limb Street, Farm Street.
Limb Street, Farm Street. We had bids to buy those pumps prior to Christmas time, but I couldn't get but two bids of that. And I asked everybody in the world for bids on those pumps, everybody that I knew that sold it. And for whatever reason, this council didn't wanna go with those two bids, y'all wanted to go with three. The supplier that gave us the low bid said if we didn't buy them now or in the next thirty days, that he wouldn't be able to get them in twenty twenty-two. I've spoken to him twice since then, he still cannot get them in twenty twenty-two. So that's where we are. We're spending money on diesel fuel pumping around there as a temporary fix.
So my question is, when are we gonna, what's the status of the Allen Street Lift Station that we all got the grant for? What is the holdup on that?
The Allen Street Lift Station? That's a completely different project. You know, that's a community development block grant that was, that was awarded to us in September. It's in design phase right now, and I think they're still doing surveying for that, or they were last week. Allen Street, that project is not just a pump station.
No, it's not just a pump.
No, and there are a lot of other components in the city going into that grant. Not just Allen Street Pump Station. There are force mains, and gravity swords, and other things involved in that, air relief valves, and other things.
So you're saying the project is already started, that's what you're saying?
No, I said it's in design, we're at finished design work. They won't have to get a solicitation for bids, they won't have to award bids before construction can begin.
So let's get back to mine.
Okay.
Because we were in the bid stage, so work can be done. And this has been brought to my attention by one of the board members.
Mine too, recently.
Okay.
From the same guy.
So that's why, where can we get, so we can get back to getting that fixed? I mean, what do we need to do?
I guess to add under that question.
I can do it again. I can put it together again, we'll see what kind of bids we got, and how much the price has increased since Christmas. I think that I'll dust off the one that I had, we'll use that as a specification, and we'll put it back out there again.
But to be clear, you're saying that the previous bids are an all-avoid?
Oh, yeah, they were only good for about fifteen, twenty. And on those bids, they said there was an increase in price, we'd get that too, and they're probably gonna do that. I'll be one of the best that this bid here tells us that if there's substantial price increases, they're gonna have to go up on those components. Because nowadays, I bought something at Lowe's, and it changed the price from the time I picked it up and put it in the car and got to the front the other day. So, yeah.
Anyway, that, it seems to be, you know, it was critical then, so I know it's in the past. So I'd like for us to do whatever we need to do to get that doing.
Yes, ma'am. And if you'd like me to, I'll dust off that.
Yes.
Those specs that I put together back before Christmas, and we'll put it on Ski Boat June, July meeting, okay? Instead of a thirty-day thing.
Mr. Fisher, would you...
These are specifications, by the way, on that North American project here. These are what we put together and put out there for you.
If you'll take a look at that, don't forget.
Sure.
Paragraph, and just, I don't know whether you've been able to utilize that source or not. It's just something that came out from municipal association to us now. Since the city infrastructure.
Hey, I get these. This is from the Don Hone, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You just mentioned the federal infrastructure program, and a webpage that you could go to and get some assistance in applying for those grants. I just wanted to be sure that we were in... I just wanted to be sure that we were, in fact, taking advantage of those opportunities to get some of those grants for later.
Yes, sir.
So who do you want to design on this?
Design on what?
For the Allen Street Lift Station?
You all approved Davis and Brown to do that design prior to my arrival.
Mr. Sugar, while you're here and while council's assembled, would you update or give them information on what's going on at Toluwa and West Broad?
I'll listen, I'll take it.
Thank you.
We've got a situation there.
Yes, we do.
I don't know whether we're going to do an executive session or whether you're going to call me back up later or not. But we've got an emergency situation at Toluwa and Broad. About a month ago, it was right after the last council... Right after the last council meeting, we had a failure of sewer line over on... Did somebody already get it? Yeah, right after the last council meeting, we had a failure of sewer line over at Toluwa Street. It's actually down on Syracuse is where we noticed that. There's what's known as a drop manhole. That's the first manhole after a lift station that the force main drops into.
Yeah.
Okay. We assembled some materials and we engaged the contractor and went over there and fixed one service and got it repaired. Thought we were done. A few days later, the next service fails. So we camera the lines again, and we did this twice. And since then, we've had failure down the street. We still get sewer through this line, it's just a trickle-through, it's not flowing the way it should. And it's filling up the manholes and going down, it's called supercharging the lines. That's the terminology for that. The... So far today, we've spent a little more than twenty-five thousand dollars over there. And just to give you, for instance, with, that's anything from a thirty-three dollar driveway marker, fifty dollars a day fueling the pump, all the way up to four thousand dollars in parts from Coral Man, or one of our suppliers. So at this point, we've got to repair these lines. We repaired and put in about forty to sixty feet of six-inch sewer line at Toluwa. We rebuilt three services. Looks like we're going to have to rebuild about five to seven more, I hope only five. We're going to have to replace a hundred and eighty feet of eight-inch line, a hundred and twenty feet of six-inch line. I hope that all those numbers are less than that. But all I've gotten together in the last two days is our contractor that we already have working for us over on the South Darlington Pump Station Project, where they're rebuilding four pump stations for us, Frank Horn Construction Company. They've come over and given us an emergency, a quote on emergency repair of that line. That's in this package that I gave you all. And their price is just under forty-one thousand dollars. That's with us supplying the pipe and parts and completing the repaving practically two hundred feet of both lanes of West Broad Street. And we're going to have other costs involved. We're still going to continue it just under a hundred dollars a day for fuel and pump rental and our folks going over to refuel the pumps. And we're going to have other costs involved, there's no doubt about it. Because we're doing the general contracting on this, and we're hiring these folks as subs, is what we're doing. Okay? Rather than just going out and telling somebody to fix it and walking off, we're not going to do that. We're going to try to be engaged in the whole thing and save as much money as possible, and we're going to buy our own parts and pieces rather than paying somebody else.
Yeah. So, I was just looking at.
Right now, the worst-case scenario of putting this thing back together and getting it going is just over fifty-five thousand dollars, fifty-five thousand, six hundred dollars. I really hope it comes in a lot less expensive than that.
This needs to come out of where?
Well, all that money that I asked you all to move last council meeting, I haven't spent. I asked you all to move close to two hundred thousand dollars worth of money into a dozen different line items or so. I haven't spent any of that money. Two of those were huge purchases, trucks, vehicles, wanted to buy two trucks. Haven't bought them yet. So we still have that money.
But the need for those trucks is still there, right?
It's still there, along with the need of all those other items that I have on there.
So what is your suggestion, take it from this line, Adams?
For right now, this is an emergency we've got to do. We've got a pump around going down the street. We've got one street completely closed off, the western end of Western, West Broad Street. We've got one lane closed from Syracuse to West Broad, and one lane closed practically from Milling Street to West Broad.
See, when you keep saying West Broad, now I want to know, is that, are you going to have the break of at Broad and Milling, West Broad and Milling, where I sit and pump it? When I see you.
That's a Syracuse and Toluwa is where the pump is. Where this is, is right at the intersection of West Broad and Toluwa, there's a cut here. This is cut in the road right here.
Ah, that's what I was.
From the folks that operated water and sewers just prior to my arrival.
That's what I'm talking about, that one.
And this area has sunk several inches in the road, and I've got a couple pictures of this if you want to look at it. And real suspect of each end of that, you know, I'm sure that they replaced this with new pipe. So a certain section of that is new. However, where they tied that on to the old sewer pipe at each end, and no one noticed, but may have corroded to the point where that's failed. And I don't know how much further along it's failed.
So, well, you have to.
Potential additional cost?
No, that is the cost of, that's what I've given you all.
Oh, okay.
So we're not worried about that, okay?
Worst-case scenario is fifty-six thousand dollars to town, but this new line, or this parcel new line that the overseen put in, and digging to the next manhole, which is all the way at the top of the hill here at Broad and Broad continues on over to Lillie, you know?
It goes over to Jefferson.
There's a manhole right there. And it's in the, it's off the road. And it's really close to a power pole. And that's one of the reasons why I couldn't get anybody else to bid on it. Everybody came and looked at all this power and looked at our sewer line and said, "We're not digging a hole over here." This guy says, "I got a machine that'll hold it in place and do power loads, so..." And that's costing us a lot of money, a thousand dollars for him just to hold the pole in place while they...
I'm asking a question, because all of the residents in there want to know how long, you know, they're not to... They're not, yeah, knowing the details of what you're doing except that how are you going to be digging Toluwa Street and Broad Street, that, all of that?
Don't think I'm going to have to dig Toluwa Street.
Because, see, that's what you got blocked off. See, that's what you got blocked off now. Because we're traveling on this area here, you saying that.
That's where I got, see, that's where the drop manhole is that takes all the sewer. It's coming up Toluwa, and I'm having to pump around that, so I got that blocked on one end.
So the work going to be on this end where you've got this?
We're going to dig up all of...
All of this?
The end of Broad Street.
Okay.
We're also going to dig up some down Toluwa, but we're not going to actually have to dig up the road. We're going to dig up the side of the road. And Broad Street's right in the middle of the street, on Toluwa, it's off the pavement. But it's this deep, so you don't just dig a straight down hole, it's kind of like this, so that the sides don't cave in on you.
And see, that's what I was trying to tell you. Anyway, yeah, that's good, as long as you get that thing done. Because, you know, it seems like every few months you die in that area, so this is what I'm saying.
Spend this money out of this line out.
I'm done, that's good.
Please, I'll make a motion that she spend the money out of this line out. Big, so Toluwa and Broad.
I'll second.
Hallelujah.
Mr. Miller, Mr. Nettow, this is back, this is a really serious time for us here. I would like to clarify a little bit. Your name and Mr. Payne's name were brought up tonight. I would like for you to clarify a certain business without coming in a business. How many times did you change a meter? Because it felt there was a leak there, which you're accused of not fixing anything, when they went way out of the way to make sure that things were taken care of.
We checked that meter every day for three months, including Saturdays and Sundays. And we changed it out twice. And we notified the owner every time, and the owner's plumber every time that we did. We had a third plumber go over that we paid to check to confirm that this particular business had a leak. And finally, the owner realizes she's got a leak and she's looking for it. But the real issue here, and if you'll let me, for just one line, I'll be brief, very brief, is the testing of water meters. And if we, if this council decides y'all want me to test water meters, I'll test them. Now, the meters that we've got cost us around a hundred and twenty to a hundred and eighty dollars. That's what they used to cost, now it costs five hundred and sixty dollars. If we're going to test them, I assume, I make the big assumption we're going to test them for accuracy. We're not going to just test them to see if they work when water goes through them, and they don't work when water don't go through them. I assume we're actually going to test them for accuracy, right? Is that what we're talking about? I'm also making an assumption that we're going to get them tested for one hundred to two hundred and fifty dollars each. That's what it's going to cost us. We've got three thousand five hundred on them. So it's going to cost us three hundred and fifty thousand to eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars to test them. If y'all can tell me how to fund that, and that's just for somebody to test it, that's going to cost us more than that. Because I'm going to have to put somebody in the office and administrative, because every time those meters are taken out and ten thousand gallons are run through them at three different speeds, slow, medium, and high, and they calculate the accuracies at all these different speeds, and then they reinstall that meter, we've got to adjust that water bill for the reading that the ten thousand or fifteen thousand gallons that went through it, those people don't pay for. So I'm just going to guess this job's going to cost us a million bucks. Wouldn't surprise me. If y'all want to fund that project, I'll be happy to get into that business. We'll start working on it as soon as you want. But otherwise, I don't know how to do this. I really don't. I've never seen a water meter operate, or any type of meter, without whatever it's measuring going through it. I've never seen one just run on its own. So I don't know if we're just testing them to see if they work when water goes through them, they don't when water doesn't, or we're actually testing them for accuracy. So that's the first thing we got to decide. Then we're going to have to make a solicitation for bids, find the funding and get the project started and all that other happy stuff. And I'll be glad to do it, y'all just tell me when, we'll start.
So since you want to bring it back up, I'm going to address it again. The issue is, nobody said check all the meters in Dawson's, who said that? I did not say that. I said, cities that I spoke to said they randomly checked their meters. I didn't say they checked every meter, I didn't say that. Now, when a citizen get a water bill for fourteen hundred dollars, saying she used eighty-something thousand gallons of water, who do that? A laundromat can't use eighty-nine thousand gallons of water in one month. How can, and on top of that, this citizen started turning the toilets off, turning the ice maker off, and turning the water thing coming into the building outside off. And they still telling you, "Well, your building is leaking water." Leaking where? Everything is turned off. How the water getting in the building? Everything is manually being turned off. Fourteen hundred dollars.
Mr. Sugar, over, how many months?
So my point is, I'm not saying check all the meters, I didn't say that. I'm saying the cities that I've talked to around here said they randomly checked their meters. That's what I said. I did not say anything about checking all the meters that are manned out.
I just wanted to clarify. How many months without this, y'all?
Okay, Mr. Payne's question, the water bill wasn't, if I'm remembering correctly, the water bill wasn't paid from like August to October, November? So there was several months in there. We downloaded and printed all of that information per hour, how many gallons went through her meter, and up to two hundred gallons an hour. We're going through that meter from ten o'clock at night to nine o'clock in the morning. And that meant at two o'clock in the morning, three o'clock in the morning, two hundred, two hundred and fifty gallons of water. Right now, right now, in the past week or two, I haven't looked at it in a week or two, since she's realized she's got a leak, there were ten to twenty gallons a minute going through it, round clock, whether she's there or not. And I had men checking it every day. And I had my ladies downloading the stuff. So all of her data is, I've got huge piles of it. I just happened to have a guy that comes by there on his way to work, so it didn't cost a lot of money. He did it on his own time.
That's correct.
Before he clocked in.
Seems to be a little discretion, to say it politely, or alternate opinions between multiple people. Is there a potential way that the city could test this, charge a fee, if it comes that the city is wrong in their readings, and we absorb that fee? If the city's not wrong in their readings, then the citizen whose property that is being requested of is charged that fee?
That's the way it's normally done in a lot of places that I've been.
Is that something the council's comfortable with?
And a lot of cities I've also spoke with said they randomly checked them meters to be sure they're operating properly.
That's fine, but that wasn't the question.
What cities with us, so I can call them and get out.
You're comfortable with that?
Tell me who they are.
I trust you.
They will share their plan with me the same way that I share my plans with them. We're all members of SC Warren. That I got you all to make a resolution for. You won't tell me what cities do that, so I can talk to them, see how they're doing? And we can tailor a project, a program around it?
Don't we pay you to do that, y'all? Don't you supposed to know how you swear?
That's not...
Don't you supposed to know how you swear?
Point of order.
No, I'm not going to tell you who I talk to.
Point of order.
I'm not going to do that. I'm not going to do that.
I asked a citizen a question, I've gotten, you know, an opinion from Councilman Seager, Mayor Boyd. Is there a reaction y'all found with that? If we have a conflict between the city's water department and a resident, that there will be a fee set that we charge the citizen? If the fee is, if the error is on the citizen's side, then the citizen would cover that fee. If the error is on the city's side, then the city would cover that fee. Is that something y'all are comfortable with?
I don't quite understand, so if they, if they find out that a resident or business has a leak and it's on their side, and it's a thousand-dollar water bill, a five-hundred-dollar water bill, then...
What would happen if they called?
Typically, have they not in the past, if a resident or customer has a leak, and it's some crazy leak...